...for the Mount Healthy City Schools for January the tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is the organizational meeting at six P. M. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Can we have call to order and roll call? Yeah, roll call.
Mrs. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Bryant is absent tonight. Mrs. Ellis?
Present.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Okay, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna have the swearing in of the new board members.
Just Mrs. Ellis, Mr. Kilgore, and Mrs. Anderson, please stand. And raise your right hand. And so, I'll go ahead and read everything and you'll just put the one spot where you'll say your name. Aye.
Aye. Carol Ellis.
And the Kilgore.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I will perform faithfully the duties of my office as a member of the Board of Education of the Mount Healthy City Schools. Please enter your vote.
I do.
Thank you. Then I'll have forms and I'll hit that sign. Thank you.
All right. The floor is open for nominations for the President of the Board. Do I have any nominations?
Do I really have to nominate me?
I, I, I think I can handle it this year.
Okay, I nominate Carol Ellis.
One second now.
Okay, could we have?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, so Julie Turner, Dr. Turner nominated Mrs. Ellis, and it Kilgore's, Mr. Kilgore second, so I'll take the role if, if we can go with Mrs. Anderson. Would Miss Ellis vote for herself?
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Ellis.
She's another camp.
Well, you don't have to ask her, we don't know. Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, will we, now we need nominations for the Vice President? Okay, I'll nominate Julie Turner. You want to take it?
Can we get a second?
Can I get a second?
So we have a motion by Mrs. Ellis to nominate Mr. Dr. Turner, sorry, with Mrs. Anderson as the second, so we'll take role. Miss Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll swear in our Ford President and our President.
Aye.
Aye. Carol Y. Ellis.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I will perform faithfully the duties of my office as President of the Board of Education of the Mount Healthy City Schools.
I do.
Thank you. Office, I, Julie Turner. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I will perform faithfully the duties of my office as Vice President and Board of Education of the Mount Healthy City Schools. I do. Thank you.
Okay. Girl, the board members have had a chance to look at the agenda.
I don't think Julie has been sworn in as the Vice President yet.
Yeah, she just did.
She just did.
I just heard. Hi, good. I'm replying.
Okay. The board members have had a chance to look at the agenda. Is there any corrections or amendments to the agenda? Okay. That's interesting. We should see, this shouldn't be organizational, this should be regular meetings.
Well, I think we're still in the organizational meeting.
Oh, okay. Acceptance of the agenda of the January tenth organizational meeting of the Board of, the Mount Healthy Board of Education. Could I have a motion to accept it? Should I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, can we have a vote?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the board members in a separate attachment had scheduled the dates for the Mount Healthy regular re, next of re, regular meeting for the year, the calendar year twenty-two. Is there any? Could I have a motion to accept the calendar? Could I have a second?
Second.
Two seconds.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any, any discussion? Okay, I just want to make a remark that if through the year, anything happens that you're not going to be able to attend the meeting, please check the diary and maybe do some work around it so that we have all five members here at the same time. So we can always change it if we, if there's a need for it. Okay, can we have a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mrs. Bryant? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
I keep doing that, I'm sorry, Mrs. Ellis. Mrs. Ellis?
Okay. Oh, yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Okay, we, the next thing on the agenda is the appointment of a purchasing agent for the calendar year of twenty-two, and the two people who are in question are Dr. Valerie Hawkins and Gary Crawley. Could I have a motion?
Hello.
Second?
Second, oh, go ahead.
Could I have a second? Oh. Any questions? Can we have a vote?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is a recommendation to approve the following persons as a purchasing agent for state and federal programs for calendar year twenty-two. Charles Slow. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
With the chief?
Yeah, truly.
I read them.
Okay, and Mr. Kilgore second. Any questions on the motion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing is a recommendation to approve the following as purchasing agents for homeless and foster care transportation for the calendar year twenty-two. Andrew Partey and Mark Walden. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Turner?
Oh. I'm so not used to you saying this.
I know.
Okay, there any questions? Okay, can we have roll call?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, number sixteen is a recommendation to approve all building principals as purchasing agents for activity funds and building budgets. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any questions on the motion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, seventeen, a recommendation to approve Janet Wolf as technology purchasing agent. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any questions on the motion? Okay, can we have both, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, number eighteen, a recommendation to approve Freda Rivera Richardson as food service purchasing agent.
So moved.
Just second?
Second.
Is there any questions on the motion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, nineteen is a recommendation to establish the service fund at twenty thousand dollars. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there any questions on the motion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, number twenty is a recommendation to appoint Rebecca Brooks as public reference request designated meeting. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second, oh, go ahead. Anderson.
Any questions on the motion? Okay, can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Twenty-one is a recommendation to authorize the investment of funds by the treasurer. And these look like these are with first financial bank, gift thurds, securities, and neither investments. Could we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Is there any questions on the motion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, twenty-two is a recommendation to adopt the tax budget from July the first, twenty twenty-two through June the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Is there any questions on that? Can we have a roll call, please?
We need a motion, motion.
The motion in a second.
We gotta make a motion, but.
I make a motion to adopt the tax budget.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions on it?
So, do you want me to give a brief summary or?
I'll leave that to you if you want me to do that.
Okay, so I'll keep it very brief. Um, the, um, the Board of Education members all have received a copy of, and Dr. Hawkins has received a copy of the tax budget. If any of you would like a copy, there are some copies in the back of the room. Um, in January every year, um, is, is the time that the Board of Education adopts the tax budget. And the Hamilton County Auditor's Office uses what's called a modified tax budget, and the Board of Education is, is required to review that and approve it and send it to the Hamilton County Auditor's Office by the twentieth. But, uh, the tax budget is, um, is the financial document that we use to convert our financial data from a fiscal year into a calendar year, and we provide that information, um, of our fiscal information, um, to the County Auditor's Office. Um, it, it consists of the general fund, the bond fund, as well as the classroom facilities fund. I meant, um, obviously the numbers that are in there are the numbers that are best of our, our knowledge as of today. Um, so this tool is, is sent to the County Auditor's Office, um, and it's, it's the document that they review to set, set our tax rates. So the tax rates are voted on by the community. The Auditor's Office reviews the financial data to verify that the money that their office is collecting is in line with what we are, are spending, so they're not over collecting, um, any voted mileage. Um, along with that document, um, the document shows, um, the expenditures as well as the revenue that's expected in those three funds, and when we submit that to the Auditor's Office, we do submit supporting documentation, which is the five-year forecast, as well as our debt schedule that shows the principal payments as well as the interest payments on our, um, on our debts, which is on the, um, the four buildings, the, the junior high, high school, um, north and south buildings that, that we did in two thousand and eight. So the County, um, County Auditor's Office will review the document, confirm that the mileage that they are collecting, um, is correct and in alignment with the payments that we have going out. They'll meet sometime in February to review that, and then they'll send back to the district our approved tax rates, which the Board of Education will, um, will approve probably sometime in March. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Can I play a few, please?
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Do you like me to roll a roll?
Yep.
Okay. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are going to go into our regular meeting, and this is a meeting of the Board of Education in public. It is not to be considered a public meeting. Our board members have had a copy of this, uh, agenda sent to them earlier, and can I get a motion to accept it?
So moved.
All right. Any questions on the agenda, any adjustments? Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the members have been, the board members have had a chance to read the minutes from the regular meeting of December the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. And I'd like to have a motion to accept the minutes from December.
So moved.
Take a second? All right, but there are any questions on the? Okay, can, can we do a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, under special orders, is there anything from the Mount Healthy Teachers Association?
They don't have anything to report this month.
Did we have any communications or announcements?
No.
Okay, um.
I do have.
Do you want to do the president's recognition?
So January is National School, or I don't know, National State, School Board Recognition Month, and so we do have some certificates for our school board members, and I do just want to thank the school board members. Mrs. Anderson, this is her first meeting with us, but the time that I've been here, I really am so thankful for each and every one of the school board members. Each of them has just such a heart for our students and really want to do everything they can to make our district an amazing district. So we appreciate all that you do every day. I know sometimes you can't go out into the community without being stopped to talk about different things, and every time I hear back, it's always that you handled the questions with grace, and people just say over and over how much they appreciate you, as do I. So we have some certificates for you. I know you'll probably want to hang these up prominently here. Everyone can see. This one is for Miss Anderson, thank you for being on our board. And this is for Ms. Bryant, thank you for being on our board. And Ms. Ellis, thank you for being on the board. For Mr. Kilgore, thank you for being on the board. And for Dr. Turner, thank you for being on the board.
Okay, well, thank you. The great open board reports are to be given until next month because they all need to go in. Okay, the legislative liaison before?
Thank you. Uh, the first item is, is not really legislative, but it, I found it interesting. The Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding. Several school districts and families from across Ohio have filed a lawsuit with the Franklin County Common Pleas Court that challenges the constitutionality of the Ed. Choice voucher program. The lawsuit focuses on Article Six, Section Two of the Ohio Constitution, which obligates the General Assembly to secure a thorough and efficient system of common schools throughout the state. That section of the Constitution further states that no religious sector or sects shall ever have any exclusive right to or control of any part of the school funds of this state. The lawsuit also raises issues with the state funding of vouchers as it compares to per student payments to some districts, arguing that it violates Article One, Section Two of the Ohio Constitution, which establishes Ohioans' rights to equal protection. Additionally, the lawsuit asks for a preliminary injunction barring the Ed. Choice Program from funding existing and new vouchers. So it'll be interesting to watch and see what happens with that. Recently signed laws, Governor DeWine signed numerous bills that were passed out of the General Assembly in mid-December. Those bills include the following. Senate Bill Two Twenty-nine, a bill referred to as the K-12 Omnibus Bill due to the multiple and extensive education-related provisions. Those provisions include blended learning, online learning, remote learning, third-grade reading guarantee, state report card, and various other education-related provisions. House Bill One Sixty-nine, a bill that provides straight, state appropriation authority for schools to receive the funding provided by Congress through the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, also known as ESER, fund in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Senate Bill One Sixty-six, a bill that establishes the Student Pathways for Career Success Grant Program and requires the state to create a program that establishes financial incentives for Ohio businesses to provide work-based learning experiences for students enrolled in career technical education programs, among other provisions. House Bill Twenty-nine, a bill that legalizes, regulates, and taxes sports gaming, prohibits betting on any sport or athletic event if a player is under the age of eighteen, and requires that ninety-eight percent of profits be used for K-12 education. And finally, House Bill One Twenty-two, a bill that establishes and modifies requirements regarding the provision of telehealth services of school psychologists, speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, occupational assistants, behavior analysts, and physical therapy assistants, among others. That's my report.
Thank you. Okay, record of the president.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to recommend to, hold on now, here. I'm on the right page now. I'd like to recommend to accept, to accept the scheduled bills for December of two thousand and twenty-one, please.
So moved.
Second? Could I get a second? Are there any questions? Could we have a roll call?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend to, to accept the financial statements for December of two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson? I was first, she was second.
Any questions? Can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend authorize the treasurer to create the following account. It's an athletic, um, department bowling fundraiser. Um, each of the athletics sports typically develops a fundraising account so that they can run fundraising programs, sometimes to buy new uniforms or just have additional things in their program. So this is, we have not had one in the past, and so we'd like to request permission to do so.
So moved.
Any questions? Could we have a roll call?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend authorizing the treasurer to execute blanket purchase orders in the amount no greater than one hundred thousand dollars, and also execute super blanket purchase orders no greater than two-point-five million. All purchase orders issued in the first half of two thousand and twenty-two will be valid until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. Blanket and super blankets issued in the beginning months of F.Y. twenty-three will be valid until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. Said purchase orders will be for recurrent expenses such as fuel, oil, electricity, cleaning, bus transportation, and the food service contracts. So that's why, um, the super blanket is at two-point-five million due to Peterman contract and, as well as, um, some of, you know, the larger ones that are the super blankets are typically for your utilities, Peterman, and, um, the cleaning company for janitorial services.
So moved.
Do you have any questions? Okay, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Let's just step in here.
Thank you.
Okay, can we have a super signature, please?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ellis. The first few items are just informational. The first relates to a change order for the Early Learning Center. Change order number forty-four was for key blanks, and it just shows the adjustment for that and the cost, so that's one of the final things. We're, we're wrapping everything up at the Early Learning Center, so hopefully that will be tied up very shortly. Second item, graduation, which will be here before we know it, will be at the Fifth Third Arena at the University of Cincinnati, May the twenty-second at two o'clock. And so we are excited that our seniors will have that opportunity to go through the graduation ceremony together down at the Fifth Third Arena. We used Fifth Third Arena last year. Everyone seemed to really enjoy it, and it's just a bonus that UC's colors happen to be the same as our colors, so that just adds a little extra excitement to it. The next item, um, I just want to really point out, Dr. Harris, who leads our innovation programs, he's doing such a great job with his team. Mary Beth Corbin was able to get two grants since our last board meeting. One was for sixty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars, and this was for each child reads. It focuses specifically on helping students with dyslexia. So we're very excited about getting this grant. The second was through the American Heart Association for Teaching Garden Grant. And we have some of our staff that have been working with fresh food in the community, and that is for twenty-five hundred dollars. So there's two more grants coming into our district, and we're always happy to get that grant money. And so is Jen and Becky, because then we don't have to use general fund money for these different programs. Each board member received, um, the two thousand twenty-one Ohio Consolidated School Report. And I just wanted to point out, this is something we turn in every year. And it's a compliance part for our district. But I wanted to make everybody aware that we actually do all of these trainings for our staff. So the first one, we do training for the use of physical restraint and seclusion on students. We make sure that our, our staff are all aware of the proper way to interact with a student if they become upset, that you cannot just put a kid in a room and shut the door, things like that. So we actually go through training on what is appropriate and what is not. We do training on harassment, intimidation, bullying. We make sure that all of our staff have training on that each year. So it's not a situation where if you've done it one time, you don't have to do it again. We go through that training each year. We also do training on the CPR machine and the defibrillator, the AED device. We have those in our building, and we want to make sure that our staff is aware how to use the machines if there was a reason to do that. We do report to Ohio that we are in compliance with the nutritional standards. That's important because we have to maintain those standards to receive money for the free lunch program. So Mount Healthy is classified as a hundred percent poverty as far as the status of free and reduced lunch. So we want to make sure that we follow those guidelines so that we are reimbursed for those meals. And none of our students have to pay for breakfast or lunch in Mount Healthy. We do use a screening for first-time kindergarteners or first-time first-grade pupils for hearing, vision, speech, communication, health, medical problems, or any developmental disorders. So all of our students, when they are either first-time kindergarteners or if we happen to have someone who comes to us in first grade and they did not go to kindergarten, we do go through these screenings to make sure that we can place them appropriately. And if there's anything that we need to address, for instance, like vision or hearing, that we take care of that quickly so that the student can be successful in our schools. We only test them if there is a need. So a lot of our preschoolers are in the program because of something that has already been identified, such as speech or something like that. But we do have several, you know, some students that are called typical students that don't have an, any issue. But if there isn't, if there's a concern, we do the testing. Um, we also go through and comply with the intra-district and intra-district open enrollment. We do have open enrollment for any staff members at this time. We do not have open enrollment for anyone in this area. But as Julie's probably heard, since she's our legislative rep, there is a lot of talk about making Ohio open enrollment statewide. So that is something that we will be on the watch for. So if we were to have had to answer no to any of these, we would have to file a report with the State of Ohio explaining why we do not do these things. But we are in compliance for all of those things. So I just wanted to highlight that for the board tonight. Okay. The next item is B, which is the recommendation to approve a resolution authorizing the Mount Healthy City School District to participate in the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any questions? I have a motion. Can we have a roll call please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. C is the recommendation to authorize the business manager to purchase equipment and other items on state-term pricing. And that has already been bid through, through the state. So it meets all of our restrictions.
Any questions on the motion? Can I have a?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the motion? Can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item D is the recommendation to approve myself, Dr. Valerie Hawkins, and Charles Ogden as compliance officers for the following policies, which deal a lot with harassment and discrimination. We try to always have a male and a female as a representative in case staff members want to come to one of us.
Can we have a motion?
So moved.
Second, oh, go ahead.
Two seconds.
Hi, Mrs. Anderson?
Any questions? Can we have a roll call please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item E is the consent agenda, and it just highlights a few positions. Of course, we mentioned we do want to congratulate Jen. She will be going to Redding as their new treasurer. We'll be sorry to have her leave the district, but we are happy to have someone locally that we can continue to work with.
And I just want to say thank you to the whole Board of Education, Dr. Hawkins, um, of course, Becky, um, the whole administration and the staff of Mount Healthy. I have thoroughly enjoyed the time that I have been here. I feel so very grateful for the opportunity that Becky has provided to me and all the training that she provided. And she got me to this next step, which is logically to become a treasurer. And I graduated from Redding, and my husband graduated from Redding. So it's a, a great place for, for me to go to, for that next step. But I definitely couldn't have done it without the training that I received here at Mount Healthy, and I will miss everybody that I've worked with, so thank you.
Motion.
So moved.
Any questions on any of the consent agenda? Okay, can we have a roll call please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
And there is one change on the next board meeting is, should be the seventh instead of the fourteenth. We made that change, but didn't make it here, yes. And that is...
Yeah, I saw that.
And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hawkins. Um, we have no special orders. Is there any thing that the board would like to discuss openly?
I'd just like to, to say again, we're going to miss you, Jen, and congratulations on the new job.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. I've enjoyed working with you all.
Like you, too. The same, same, and also welcome, Ms. Anderson.
Yeah, welcome, Ms. Anderson, our new board member.
Thank you.
What do we have on your floor? So, um, Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins has explained the next, um, change to the next meeting, which will be February the seventh at six P.M. at the board office here. If there is no further information to come before this board, um, or then you can do your job. Can I have a motion to do this?
So moved.
Six thirty-one.
Anybody?
Do us a second, please.
So, any, any, any question?
Do you want me to roll the roll or just all say aye?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.